Good evening, everyone. Welcome to beautiful downtown Grand Forks. This is Grand Forks City Council's Committee of the Whole from Monday, February 28th, 2022, under Item 1, Call to Order 1.1. Welcome and roll call.
Weigel.
Here.
Dr. Kler.
Here.
Weber.
Mock.
Here.
Cavami.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Veen.
Here.
We have a call.
Great. Under Item 2, Discussion Items 2.1, Special Events Noise Variance in Letter of Intent for Co-Mingling for Hugo's Concert Series for May 7th, Street Dance, North Third Street Pop Rocks, July 19th, Travis Tritt, Special Guest Rodney Atkins on the Greenway. Travis Tritt, that's a big one. July 21st, Town Square, Johnny Holmes Band, which takes me back to my college days, and August 12th, to be announced on the Greenway. Ms. Simeoni, good evening.
Good evening. I'm really just here for questions. All their paperwork is in. They have met with Sergeant Brown over at the Police Department and are following suit for what is going to be needed for their security.
Very good. Any comments or questions? Move approval? Moved by Cavami, second by Mock. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 2.2, Budget Amendment, Fire Department, Fiscal Year 2021, State Homeland Security Grant Number 12. Chief, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy, members of the council. This is one of our yearly grants for sustainment of our regional response teams for hazardous materials and technical rescue. DES is a little behind. This is actually a 2021 fiscal year grant. The request is to accept the grant money and approve any necessary budget amendments.
Any comments for the chief? Moved by Veen, second by Weber. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.3, Draft Beekeeping Ordinance. Mr. Bedard, good evening.
President Sandy, members of the committee. As you may recall, talking about keeping a fowl, I mentioned beekeeping in town. It is a practice that is occurring, seeking a policy decision from you guys in regards to whether you want to continue allowing beekeeping in town as it is under state law or if you would like to draft an ordinance for the city. We brought back drafted ordinance for your review if that's the way you want to go. That is before you today.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Bedard about the proposed ordinance? Any thoughts? Has anyone heard from anyone about this? Mr. Weber, comment?
So, if I'm reading this correctly, we're talking about requiring licensing?
This would require a permit, much like a fowl permit.
Is there a charge for that permit?
No. I'm not proposing one, no. There could be a few socho's.
Yeah.
I thought I read somewhere in there there was a $5. Is that the state? The state of North Dakota's?
Yeah, under the state laws, they would be licensed under state.
So, anyone operating within the city would also have to comply with state?
Would have to follow state laws, as they would currently. So, it's just if we wanted to add on property line distances and some of these other provisions.
Any requirement to get buy-in from neighbors under the current?
Not as drafted.
I'll move approval.
There's a motion by Weber. Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Second by Cavami. Great. Any other discussion? Mr. Cavami?
So, I'm just curious where this came from? You know, was this just something that we're doing to better align with other cities and the state requirements or?
No, this has been a question that's come to my attention over the past several years, 2016 and on. We have at least one person who keeps several hives in town. I'm told there are a few others. We've had some issues that have been resolved. It just took tracking down who was keeping bees. And so, there's not a lot of them, but I'm not aware how many there really are. So, but people continue to call with questions whether are they allowed or, you know, why does my neighbor have them?
Sure.
So, the questions come to me and just seeking a policy decision on whether you want to continue them to be allowed, whether it's under state code or if you want your own ordinance on it. So, we have drafted one for your consideration.
Very reasonable. Thank you.
Mr. Veen, comments?
Yeah, so, the question would be, what problem are we solving with this?
Well, as we have run into some situations in the past that, again, were resolved, just possibly faster in getting in contact with them, but if they are following the state laws, it should be fairly simple to look up who is keeping the bees under the state listing.
So, previously, they've been operating under state law, now we're adding more with the city?
This would add some preventative measures such as setbacks, and one of the big ones would be having a water source on site because bees are going to seek after water. And one of the issues that we have had is they'll congregate in puddles in an alley and then they can really, at that point, become a nuisance if they're, you know, inhibiting you from the use of your garage or going out and getting your lawn mower.
Is this going to require a public hearing?
It would.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Veen. Mr. Weber, you asked the question about the neighbor's approval. Do you not think that somebody who has? So, I believe the beekeepers put hives around town. They will ask their neighbor or someone else if they can put a hive in their backyard. Do you not believe? And I don't know if I have an opinion on this. I'm morbidly curious, your opinion. Should that person who's allowing a hive in their backyard be required to ask their immediate next-door neighbors if it's okay? I don't know the answer to that. I don't think we've necessarily had a complaint, so maybe until there's a complaint? I don't know. What are your thoughts?
So, my understanding is we're primarily providing clarification for an issue that's kind of created some questions for you in the past. Basically, you were following state law. You're making it a little more restrictive. But, to take other information, but to answer your question more directly, I believe, in my experience, and I've kept bees in my backyard, there's a lot of confusion between wasps and bees. And I never was stung by a bee in my backyard, but wasps would still come around to the picnic table. The bees didn't. The wasps would come around. And the people who are providing habitat for bees usually are gardeners with lots of watering, so I don't think the water is generally an issue. If someone's acting irresponsibly with an apiary, then this would give us the opportunity to address that. Otherwise, I do not see any need for going around and getting permission for keeping a naturally occurring phenomenon. Yeah.
Great. Any other comments or questions?
If I may.
Yes.
To answer your question, we have had concerns in the past. To my knowledge, the main beekeeper in town has been very amiable to the neighborhood concerns and has moved some hives based on some of those concerns. I don't know if a local ordinance is necessary, but it would give us some local tools to use and I'm hoping it would be a preventative measure so that it continues to be a safe practice.
Great. Thank you.
For your discretion.
Ms. Mock?
So, if we did this, would they then be able? Would you be able to track where those hives are located and provide a map or location information if it came up?
We would keep track of who has hives and where, based on the permitting. Again, that is a provision that is also in the state law, so if they are following the state law, there should be a registry of the beekeeper that breaks it down at least to the neighborhood and block, not necessarily to a street address though.
Yeah, I think, I don't know. For me, I think it would be important to keep a record of it and have it at the local level. I think that would be good information, especially if complaints did come in. And we know from previous discussions that you were supposed to have a permit to have chickens, and we found out there were some cases where that wasn't, you know, happening, whether because of people's ignorance or, you know. So, I think it's okay to have multiple levels.
Great. So, Mr. Bedard, we should have a public hearing this evening, correct? Or do you want to? Would we have the public hearing at the council meeting? Very good.
At the council.
Great. So, there's a motion and a second on the floor. Any other comments?
Sandy?
Yep, Mr. Weigel?
Just a quick question for Mr. Bedard. I was looking through the ordinance. What's the penalty for not complying with this ordinance if it were to be passed?
That's a good question, Mr. Weigel. We could revoke the permit. Other than that, I would have to review that section of code to see if a fine would be possible. No?
The city attorney, Mr. Gosted? Yes, sir? There is no fine in the ordinance. It's, as Mr. Bedard mentioned, a revocation of the license.
So, they could, even if they were violating this, they'd have their permit revoked, but they could still continue to operate, having bees in their backyard, and there'd be no penalty. Is that correct?
That's an accurate statement. There's no monetary penalty for having the bees.
So, my question, Mr. Sandy and other council members, is why are we doing this? If we're going to create an ordinance to have more oversight of beekeeping, but yet we're not including a fine or anything for somebody that breaks the ordinance, then I don't see much reason for the ordinance.
Mr. Gosted?
May I correct one? It does, I just noted that it does indicate that you'd be guilty of maintaining a public nuisance. So, whatever, I don't know what exactly the penalties are for a public nuisance, but it does, subsection R does maintain that if you maintain or allow a hive to be kept in violation of the provisions of the section, you'll be deemed guilty of a public nuisance.
Mr. Bedard? Is that satisfactory?
I can't recall what the fine is or what we do for a public nuisance. I know we've dealt with some in the past, but I don't recall what the penalty was for.
And by the city council meeting, I can have that information. I think there is, I don't want to speak. I'll have that information available at the council meeting. I apologize for not having that available tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Bedard. Item 2.4, Approved Plans and Specs for Project 8411, District 762, Belmont Road Reconstruction from 57th Avenue South to River's Edge. Mr. Lieberman?
Good evening, President Sandy, members of the committee. This is our third of three phases to reconstruct Belmont Road. This section is from 47th Avenue South down to River's Edge Drive. This met the city council three weeks ago where the engineers' report, special assessment district, were approved. Since then, we have held, engineering has held a public input meeting, and we've completed plans and specifications for this project. At the public input meeting, we did have relatively good attendance, eight to 10 people in person, several additional phone calls with questions, many of the typical questions about the projects, you know, why am I paying for this and I don't use this road, just details. There was some concern about the amount of the assessments. We brought that back to the Special Assessment Commission last week, and they reaffirmed the original decision that they applied the policy appropriately. So, the, I'm sorry, is there a question?
Yeah, as long as we're talking about the special assessment districts. I've spoken with a couple of members from my community, from the fifth ward, excuse me, and, you know, I think that this brings an opportunity to maybe have a discussion about maybe zooming out a little bit on the special assessment districts. You know, looking at the costs of Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3, they're very similar. Phase 1 and Phase 3, almost the same, right? But the taxable valuations of those districts from Phase 1 and Phase 2, then you go into Phase 3, is drastically different. So, I think there is some inequity when it comes to, you know, one neighbor, what he's paying versus the next neighbor, what they're paying. So, I was going to try to just say, I think we should just have some more discussion about this, not right now, obviously, but I do think this is something that, as we're looking at multi-phase projects, we might need to zoom out a little bit to better assess the total project because I certainly don't want to feel like I'm paying less than my neighbor but reaping the same benefit simply because of, you know, the procedural structure of a project. So, look forward to talking about that offline.
The current engineer's estimate for this project is $1.7 million. We are still applying the 80% city cost share to this policy, so the city's share would be $1.1 million, which is budgeted for in Fund 4815. The remainder would be special assessed to that district. With that, engineering is recommending approval of plans and specifications for this project.
Any questions about the plans and specs for the Belmont reconstruction? Mr. Veen? Move approval. Moves approval, second by Weber. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.5, Approves Plans and Specs for Project 8427, 2022 Asphalt Street Repairs. Mr. Lieberman?
Thank you. This is our annual asphalt street repair contract. Each year, we set aside roughly $50,000 for, not pothole repairs, but when there's a blow-up on an asphalt street or we have an emergency water main repair and it requires asphalt repair afterwards, this contract would take care of that for the city. We have completed plans and specifications and request approval of those and approval to advertise for bids.
Any comments for Mr. Lieberman? Questions?
Quick question.
Yes, Mr. Weber?
How has this winter been for the roads? It doesn't look as bad as we've had.
It's often, oftentimes, it's when the freeze thaw starts to occur and it starts to break up. In about a month or so, month and a half, we should really know.
$50,000 seems pretty good.
Some years, we need it. Some years, we don't. We like to stay ahead of that curve so we don't have streets that are falling apart, but it's there if we need it.
Do we still need a motion on this?
Yes, sir. Moved by Weber, second by Cavami. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.7, Bid Award for Project 8473, 2022 Inlet Bag Contract. Mr. Lieberman?
Thank you, President Sandy. This is one of our two that I bring this evening as far as went out for bids, and we had a bid opening last week. This particular contract protects our stormwater inlets in residential construction neighborhoods. We did receive two bids. The low bid was $73,200 by RJ Zavron and Sons. It's just a little bit over the engineer's estimate, about 1.5% over our estimate. We are recommending award to the low bidder in the amount of $73,200.
Any questions? Mr. Weber moves approval. Is there a second by Mock? Great. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.8, Approved Plans and Specs for Project 8502 Concrete Bike Path on South Washington from 55th to 59th Avenue South. I'm sorry, did I skip one? Oh, I did. Sorry about that. 2.6, Bid Award Project 8421, 2323, 2022 Sanitary Sewer Repairs, 2022 Water Main Repairs, and 2022 Storm Sewer Repair. Sorry, Mr. Lieberman.
Thank you, President Sandy. This is our annual contract to repair water mains, storm sewers, sanitary sewer breaks should they occur. It also accomplishes some routine maintenance for us around the city. We had a bid opening this past week and received three bids. The low bid was $273,179 by Taggart Contracting. That is approximately 14% below the engineer's estimate, so we're very pleased with those bids. And we recommend awarding the contract to the low bidder in the amount I just stated.
Thank you, Mr. Lieberman. Any questions? Storm sewers moved by Mock, second by Weber. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Now on to 2.8. Thank you, Mr. Lieberman. Plans and specs for Project 8502 Concrete Bike Path on South Washington, 55th to 59th Avenue South. Mr. Crinko, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy and members of the committee. Staff report you have before you is for a 10-foot-wide concrete shared-use path on South Washington Street from 55th to 59th. This is extending that bike path that's currently there, further south to kind of parallel into that developed area. This project also includes installation of sidewalks on 55th Avenue South and 57th Avenue South from South Washington to 14th Street. Sidewalks are proposed to be 100% city-funded, and that is because these are at the rear of the residential properties, so per city policy, those are 100% city-funded. The engineer's estimate for this project is approximately $226,000. Funding would come from Street and Infrastructure Fund 4815, and we're anticipating opening bids on this March 31st. With that, staff is recommending approving plans and specs and directing engineer to advertise for bids for the project.
Comments? Mr. Veen? Moves approval, second by Cavami. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 2.9, Award Bid Project 8497, 9899, Districts 223 and 24. Street lighting for 28th Avenue South, 25th Street to Columbia Road. Street lighting for South 23rd Street, 30th to 32nd Avenue South, and street lighting, LED conversion for BFM addition. Mr. Crinko?
Thank you. This project is including the relamping of the BFM area. This is from South Columbia Road to about South 20th Street and from 24th Avenue South to 32nd Avenue South. It's going to include relamping all of the current high-pressure sodium lights to LED fixtures, which is going to have a fair amount of energy savings, as well as adding streetlights on 28th Avenue South and South 23rd where there currently are not any streetlights. We received a total of four bids. Bids range from approximately $105,000 to $140,000. Engineer's estimate on this project was $128,000, and staff is recommending awarding the contract to the low bidder, Fusion Automation, in the amount of $104,973.51, and any necessary budget amendments.
Thank you. Mr. Crinko? Moved by Weber, second by Cavami. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 210, Construction Engineering Agreement for Project 8228 Reconstruction of North Fourth Street from DeMers to First Avenue North. David?
Thank you. This project is utilizing about $1.6 million of federal funding through the Urban Grant Program. The construction engineering services are eligible for this on an 80/20 split, so we are looking at approximately $200,000 of this contract being funded through the federal government and the other approximately $50,000 being local share. As a required step that we need to have, construction engineering or inspection services for DOT project, and instead of using local staff, we ended up hiring this out to a consultant. We received a total of two proposals, and we ended up going through the typical DOT selection process and selected CPS Engineering. We went through scope and feet negotiations with them, and staff is recommending approving the agreement with CPS for construction engineering services in the amount of $248,321.13 for the project.
Comments or questions? Move approval. Moved by Cavami, second by Veen. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Crinko. Item 211, Project 8507 Sand Blast and Paint Riverside Pool. Ms. Parvy, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy, members of the committee. Tonight, we're asking you to recommend to award the bid for painting and sandblasting Riverside Pool to Color Dynamics in the amount of $74,760, which will include the time and material for patching and caulking. Last spring, when we started talking to the Park District about needs for Riverside Pool, they had mentioned that they were interested in putting a liner in the pool. At that time, we realized that it was a fairly significant investment to do that and started exploring the water leakage that they had experienced at the site. Working with One Seth Plumbing and Heating, we realized that the pipes actually did show underneath the basin to be leaking, and that if we were going to proceed, we would possibly take the basin out, the concrete on the basin, as well as repair the piping. If we put the basin back in, then we wanted to make sure that the concrete was sound on the rest of the pool, so hired Braun Intertek, and they came in and did some significant coring through the actual concrete basin and the walls itself, and had found that there was, because the pool is built in the '40s, that there has been damage over time and that any type of repair that we try to make would be pretty challenging, so that that would need to be replaced. With that information, we wanted to bring that to you tonight, just so that you know. In going forward, we have probably three to five years before we really aren't able to continue to paint it and repair and patch it. That's something will need to be done at that site. We have talked with the Park District. They are aware and have informed the Park Board and are looking at options as to what we could do for that site, along with other community planning. Mr. Phelan's been working with Mr. Helyer on that. Knowing that we have some time, tonight, we are just asking you to allow us to paint it so we can get it ready for the summer, but know going forward that we'll have to step back and kind of look at what we do long-term at that site for the needs for that facility.
Comments or questions? Mr. Weber?
I'm sure it's in the staff report, but it's a long staff report with a lot of history there. So, the $74,000, is that the city's share or is this the total cost? And what is the city's share if that's the total cost?
The total cost would be the $74,000. The city does pay for the capital improvements to the pool. The agreement that we have with the Park District, which I didn't provide, but I can share as a reminder on that, is that we cost share in the operations and maintenance of it, and then we pay, the city pays for the capital because it is owned by the city of Grand Forks.
And so, the issue you're talking about, three to five years down the road, that's going to come all to the city, isn't it?
Likely, yes.
Likely, yes. In the meantime, I'll move approval.
Moved by Weber. Is there a second? Second by Veen. I will note that if in five years we have to make a dramatic change, I do not believe we should reconstruct on the wet side of the dyke. I don't necessarily think it shouldn't be in Riverside or it shouldn't be on the north end, but I don't think, having that thing flood every year causes so many problems for that pool, and in major flood years, it ends up opening late, and we have all sorts of problems, and we have to do extra painting and all sorts of things. So, I'm not saying I want to take that, the pool out of Riverside Park because I don't. I just, there's got to be a way we can find a spot to have a nice north-ended neighborhood pool that doesn't flood every three years. Anyway, there's a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 212, Award Contract with eyesight Drone Services for Wildlife Mitigation with Small UAS for the city of Grand Forks. Ms. Parvy?
Thank you. USDA Wildlife Services was here a few weeks ago and did provide you with an update. We have found that there is some benefit to having the small UASs help us with mitigation at the wastewater treatment plant and surrounding area. We did do an RFP. We did get two proposals. Eyesight Drone Services had scored the highest. We have talked with them, and they are comfortable with providing those services, so we're recommending you tonight to award the contract to them and not to exceed the $60,000 in professional services to help us with that mitigation effort.
Great. Any comments or questions? Move approval. Moved by Weigel. Is there a second? Second by Mock. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Lastly, Item 213, Wildlife Services Agreement for the U.S. Department of Agriculture Wildlife Services Fiscal Year 2021. Ms. Parvy?
Correct. Correct. Oh, does it say 21, 22? So for this year, this would renew the contract with USDA Wildlife Services to be able to, sorry for the typo, able to continue the work that they've done out there. Like I had mentioned, they are kind of the meat of being able to mitigate wildlife. We work with the wildlife, I'm sorry, with the UASs and able to help, but they do provide the day-to-day interaction out there, working with our interns, et cetera. The contract is actually for, I think, up to $124,000. Last year, we spent just a little over 70. So it's just, it covers everything that they, they think they might need throughout the year, but I don't anticipate we'll use that full amount.
Thank you, Ms. Parvy. Any comments or questions? Moved by Cavami, second by Veen. Any other comments? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Weber. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Parvy, under information only, we have a COVID update for everyone's perusal. We, we don't have a public hearing tonight at all, and typically, we wouldn't take public comments on a committee to the whole meeting, but I'm happy to take the two comments that I have, or the comment cards that I have. If Mr. Cadillac would like to come to the microphone, you're welcome to speak for three minutes.
Thank you, President Sandy. Council members, mayor. Craig Spicer, his son and I were sitting at the county office the last meeting you guys had with them. And what you basically did is you outlined how you went about on this project. And, you know, the people of Grand Forks are learning the basics of how you guys do these. In the meantime, I'm getting a lot of stuff back from people like Ross and Chris Berg. And something that really disturbs me now that I've gotten out of this is, I've been informed that Cirrus, which is owned by the Chinese, manufacture engines for their aircraft. That same engine is used in their missiles.
Cirrus doesn't manufacture engines at all. They don't manufacture any engines whatsoever, not one single engine.
Okay. And the only other thing I'll say at this time, Sandy, is let me be the first one to give you my condolences. Because I understand that there's a program that isn't going to be around here much longer.
Thank you, I guess. Great. Mr. Kelso?
Thank you, James Kelso, Fourth Street. You fellows made a major national newspaper today. Big readership. I think it's the best research newspaper in the world, that's why I subscribe. It's called The Epoch Times, 450 cover price, street price. It was created by Chinese who escaped the communist tyranny in the most evil dictatorship in the history of planet Earth. There's no questioning that. Surpasses Hitler, surpasses Stalin. And it exists today. It is killing people in concentration camps today. It is live organ harvesting people today and selling their organs. And unfortunately for you folks, you just helped them out, or you're in the process of doing that. The headline today is, Chinese Agribusiness Factory in North Dakota Draws Scrutiny Over Chinese Communist Party Ties and Security Risks. And this article continues on page 810. Chinese Agribusiness Poised to Open Factory in North Dakota Draws Scrutiny. Here's a picture of concentration camp, one of their huge factories. And I'm going to, I'm going to distill my thought, I'm going to add some comments, but I have one question for you, Councilman Veen, Cavami, Sandy, Mock, Weber, and if they're watching on TV, Dotler and Weigl and Mayor Bocinski. I ask you, when you approve this, and when we Grand Forks North Dakotans have this enormous Chinese communist operation running in our town, and we all know what walks and we all know what talks, it's money, and that's what we're looking at today, money. My question to you is, honestly, between yourself and your god, what percentage of control of Fu Feng is exerted by the Chinese Communist Party? It's a fact, there is a certain percentage, and you're smart people. What percentage of control of this huge factory that you're about to put right in the middle of our town, employing hundreds of our citizens, maybe eventually thousands, what percentage of the control of those employees of that factory, of that real estate, and of you will be exerted by the Chinese Communist Party? I have the answer here. It's 100%. Not 99, not 99.9. It's 100%. How do we know that? Because there is not a single business in Communist China that has any independence, not one, not a shoe sign stand, not one. Not true, says Councilmember Sandy. Okay, what do you think the percentage of influence? Well, first of all, do you think the percentage of influence by the Chinese Communist Party of Fu Feng is 0%?
I couldn't wager a guess, but you're, you laid claims that there are not any, okay, every business in China is government-owned. That is not true. That is a fact.
That is true.
It is not true.
Okay.
That is a blatant lie.
I'll continue my comment with my brief time. Shi Chunli, the head of this clued-out outfit that she wanted to put in charge of a large part of Grand Forks, Shi Chunli is a Communist Party official, vastly awarded witness chairmanship of this company by his faithful service to the Communist Party. The percentage of every business in China is 100%. And if there's some person, somebody in China, who thinks they actually own their business, we've heard about how those people disappear, including billionaires who have disappeared. Now, the naivety of Americans is unbelievable. China is run by the Communist Party. These are Chinese people. They're not naive like you, Councilwoman Sandy. These people have dead relatives, imprisoned relatives, tortured relatives. They are Chinese who wish to restore freedom to their nation. You're not helping them.
Thank you, Mr. Kelso. I appreciate it.
Is that the end of my time?
Are you planning on going for quite a while longer?
Whatever, until you cut me off.
You're welcome to wrap it up.
Until you cut me off, because I'll tell you what, the future of Grand Forks is at stake. This is not a Beehive question. This is the future of this city and of this state. We allowed Cirrus to be sold to the Chinese Communist Party, and it is owned by the Chinese Communist Party.
We didn't have any, we didn't have any say in it.
Okay. Christopher Wray, who's no right-winger, okay, he's as left-wing as you can get, the head of the FBI. He said, "When I found out how much spying the Chinese are doing on American technology and how much theft they're doing," he said, "It was mind-blowing." The Chinese, I assure you, there's not one industrial secret or trade practice, American ingenuity out at Cirrus that is not fully known, fully transferred over to red China.
Because they purchased the company.
It's called, by the way, okay, read Peter Schweitzer's book, Red Handed, okay, and he describes, they have a term in China, the Chinese generals who want to enslave you and who want to defeat your nation. They have a term that you're unfamiliar with, because you don't research the question, called elite capture. And that's what they're doing with you. It's called capture of the elite. That's how they defeat a nation. And it's, and their trick is money.
Okay. Thank you. That's, that's.
That's the end of my time.
Yeah, thank you.
And by the way, when are you going to, could I ask a question? How long will the public, I mean, Mayor Bocinski said that there's been due diligence. Oh, come on. This is a rush job. This is a rush job.
Okay, Mr. Kelso, thank you.
The citizens of Grand Forks, that you are, that you are, whose city you are ruining, they don't know this is happening. If you will go out in the street and ask Grand Forks citizens.
Can I entertain a motion to adjourn? Mr. Veen?
No, no, I'll sit down, I'll sit down.
There a second?
Yeah. What's that fellow said? You, you.
Those are all of my speaker parts.
You can't handle the truth.
Is there a second?
I'll second, but I actually like to discuss.
No, no, I'll sit down. But I'm just wondering, when are you going to put a ribbon on this?
Are you sitting down, or are you not sitting down?
Okay, all right.
So I'd like to take a moment and address, we have some very loyal viewers online. Mr. Ben Moore at Seawork Plains is in a house with his friends run by Prairie Harvest. He never misses city council, so I wanted to shout out to Ben. Thank you for watching, and to all your friends, we appreciate your support. And I second to adjourn.
Very good. Any other comments? Hearing none, and all those in favor do adjourn, say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign, we're adjourned. Thank you.